Good evening. Good evening and welcome to tonight's dual-language, nonpartisan forum for candidates running for Lompoc School Board. I'm Dinah Perez Lockhart, tonight's co-moderator and vice president of Programs for the American Association of University Women, AAUW, Lompoc-Vanderburgh Branch. AAUW is a nonpartisan organization committed to a mission of equity for all and is open to all genders. I am joined tonight by our co-moderator Carmen Martinez, a member of Future for Lompoc Youth, and Allen Hancock College Student. AAUW is very pleased to host this forum with our colleagues at Future for Lompoc Youth and League of Women Voters, North County. The League is also a nonpartisan organization which encourages the informed and active participation of citizens in government through voter registration and education. For the last 60 years, since the chartering of our branch, AAUW has hosted nonpartisan forums as a service to our community. Tonight, the forum is offered with dual-language live interpretation in person and on Zoom webinar so that all can participate in their preferred language. In our live and Zoom audience, there is a wide representation of new and diverse voters excited to hear from our candidates.
Here is tonight's agenda. First, we will go through a welcome and land acknowledgement. We will go over forum protocol and structure. We will look over district maps and the candidates. We will go through some voting steps and remind you of the upcoming nonpartisan dual-language forum for the Lompoc City Council and mayoral candidates. And lastly, we will go through a thank you. As a reminder, no unauthorized video recording or photography is permitted. Please silence cell phones and hold applause until the conclusion of the forum. Before we begin tonight, we acknowledge that Lompoc-Vanderburgh rests on an ancestral land of the Schumash people. AAUW honors the Schumash elders, past, present, and future. We come together tonight following the Schumash tradition to learn and grow as a community. As we begin our forum, we will do our best to speak slowly and clearly to enable accurate interpretation and will give a signal if you are speaking too quickly.
Okay. Let's review the forum protocol and structure. All candidates received invitations with forum rules. All participating candidates agreed to forum rules. One candidate, Leanne Woolever, District 5 candidate, neither confirmed or declined the forum invitation and is therefore not participating. District 3 is not on the ballot. The term extends through 2026. Issues and questions came from the community through Zoom registration. Candidates received a potential list of issues which might be discussed at the forum. Candidates did not receive the questions in advance. No unauthorized video recording or photography is permitted. Please silence your cell phones and hold applause until the conclusion of the forum.
Forum structure. Speaking order will go in ballot order. Opening statements are 30 seconds per candidate. All candidates' questions were selected from community input. Question responses are up to two minutes. Timekeepers will raise a yellow card with 30 seconds remaining and a red card when time is expired. Rebuttal. All other candidates will have an optional one-minute rebuttal per question. Closing statements are 30 seconds per candidate.
Now, let's meet the candidates for tonight's forum. This is District 1. School Board Candidates, District 1. Jerry Thiel, Tracy Phillips. District 1 voters, vote for 1.
The candidate for District 2 is Mitch Torina, who is running unopposed. Here is the map for District 2.
The candidate for District 4 is Brenda Villa, who is running unopposed.
Here is the map for District 5. School Board Candidates, District 5, Carson Link and Leanne Wolver. District 5 voters, vote for 1.
School District 3 is not up for election this year. We will now have opening statements. Each candidate will provide a 30-second opening statement. And Ms. Thiel, we will begin with you.
What's a signal if we're talking too fast? I probably will. I just want to know what to look for. Hi, I'm Jerry Till. I'm running for reelection to Lompoc Unified School Board, and I'm going to go back before I was elected the first time. Forty years ago, my family decided to move to California because California had some of the highest education achieving schools in the country. My children were raised here and went through our schools and graduated. I've had two grandchildren go through Lompoc Unified School District and graduate. I currently have two great-grandsons that are ready to get into this system. They're just being primed at this point. So Lompoc's really important to me, Lompoc Unified School District is.
Firstly, I want to thank the AAUW and the Forum of Lompoc Youth for this chance to talk tonight. So I'm Tracy Phillips. I was a STEM teacher in the California public school system for 36 years. I spent 22 years at Cabrillo High School. I'm also currently teaching at Allen Hancock Community College. In addition to my work experience, I've also had two children that went through the school system in Lompoc as well. As a board member, I would hope to bring all my experiences and my insights from the experiences to my decisions as a board member.
Good evening. My name is Mitch Torina, and I am running unopposed in District 2. And one of the questions I seem to get a lot is why I'm running for board. I'm bringing 30 years of experience of working as an educator from Santa Barbara Unified. I've done everything from being a drug and alcohol counselor to assistant superintendent of Human Resources and Student Services. But the true answer is, I believe in kids. I believe that every kid has an opportunity to succeed. Thank you.
I've been asked if all the candidates could please speak directly into the microphone.
Hello, everyone. Hola a todos. Mi nombre es Brenda Villa. My name is Brenda Villa, and I am running for the school board unopposed. I am running because it is time for someone with a new perspective, a new voice, new ideas, and new energy to serve as a school board member, as someone who understands many of the challenges our schools face today. I want to ensure that all, and I repeat, all students have someone that represents them, someone as well sort of the teachers, parents, and the community as a whole.
Hi, my name is Carson Link. I'm running for District 5. I was born and raised here in Lompoc. I currently work for the state Senator Monique Lemoine, doing state policy for our education. I'm running first and foremost to create a better workforce here in Lompoc. We're missing out on the future of jobs. We need more trades in our schools. We need more STEM programs in our schools to take advantage of the jobs that we're developing on base. These are really good-paying jobs, and quite frankly, we are missing the mark currently. Additionally, I also have a lot of experience dealing with the state government, dealing with bureaucratic agencies and all of that sort of thing, but we'll get into that.
We will now begin the questions. Each candidate will have two minutes. Carmen?
Question 1. In the Lompoc Unified School District's five-year plan for 2023 to 2025, there have been references to aging facilities, deteriorating buildings, asbestos, and hazardous electrical wiring, among many other concerns. As a member of the school board, how would you address these issues? Ms. Phillips, we will begin with you.
So first, I believe that our students are our responsibility, and the physical plant or the physical appearance of a school kind of sets a stage for how they are going to feel and react in the classroom. The classroom sends a message, whether we want it to or not, about who and what is valued. And research has shown that behavior and academic achievement is directly related to how kids feel about the environment around them. We can't expect students to achieve if they are in a classroom that's 60-plus-years-old with broken pipes and dirty and unsafe conditions. So I've experienced all these things myself. I was in a classroom here for 22 years. I have seen the mold. I've had it in my classroom. I've seen the broken pipes. I've had gas leak issues. I've seen the flooding. I've seen holes in the walls. So all of those things I know have affected both my students and myself. So I would definitely say I believe that the schools must be improved. Investing in the schools is the same as investing in our students and our future. If we continue to kind of neglect them, we're basically neglecting something that could potentially help our students achieve in the long run. So the other thing is that better schools also equate to better values in the community. So it's been shown that the greater the school system in a community, the higher the value of homes in that community. So for all these reasons, I definitely support Measure M, and I would like to see it implemented. And I would like people to take advantage of the schools or the district's bus tours that are being offered on the 28th and the 5th, to actually see this themselves.
Mr. Torina?
Thank you. First and foremost, Measure M. Let's not be candid about that. We need Measure M to pass. We haven't had a bond in, I think, 20-plus years. My wife is a teacher. She's experienced exactly what Ms. Phillips has talked about, standing puddles in a classroom, no heat, things that make young people, children, feel as if they are not valued. And so we cannot continue and have that as an environment for our students to try to learn in. So first off, Measure M. Let's pass that as a community. Let's pass that as people who care about our children. And then secondly, what I would really want to look at is, there have been some improvements in some schools, but from an equity standpoint, what I'd like to see is what schools have had improvements, remodels initially, and then where can we get more bang for our buck as we try to go across our district, elementary all the way through high schools, and look at where the need of repair and remodel or even replacement will first affect our students. The closer to the students we get, the more effect and more impact I think we will have when we do those types of facilities work.
Ms. Villa?
I do want to say that I am 100% supportive of Measure M. As someone who went through the school here in Lompoc from middle school to high school, I have witnessed how old the facilities are, and I think it's time for the schools to be renovated. It's unfair the students have to go to schools in this conditions. But I do want to share a quick story. I actually met with someone who came to Lompoc recently because they got a job here, and it's unfortunate what they shared with me, that they came from Fresno, he came from Fresno, and he left his wife and kids back in Fresno because the schools here are just not to the standards that he was expecting. So that shows that it's not only education, which is the most important part, but it also affects other areas in our community. So yes, I am 100% supportive of Measure M, and I think it's time that we look for the future and continue moving forward and not going backwards.
Mr. Link?
Well, I hope we're not going to do too much agreeing up here, but yeah, I support Measure M big time. Schools are in desperate need of repair, first and foremost. A lot of people ask, well, why can't the schools just do that themselves? Well, the way that our schools are funded is through state funding. And so about 60% of our funding comes from the state of California, which is great because that means when the state of California runs out of money, which sometimes it does, the schools still get funded. The problem with that is though is that they mandate that we're not allowed to use that funding on permanent structures, permanent improvements, things like that. And so they say, if you want better schools, if you want nicer classrooms, you want a new school, that needs to come from the community, and they need to step up and invest in their kids. It's been since 2002 since we've done that. I think it is about damn time. And so I think that that needs to pass. I think we also, I agree with what Mitch is saying too, though. We really need to look at places that we have fixed in the last bond. A lot of concern about the bond comes from the fact that they're worried about oversight. They're worried about people being held accountable, and that's ultimately on us as potential board members, to make sure staff are spending the money right, that we're spending it in the places where it needs to be spent, and that you're going to have public officials who are going to be held accountable come to the forum and answer your questions. And so I think that we need to do better in terms of that, and we need to also make sure that, once we make those investments, that we put some money aside, it's called deferred maintenance, and we make sure that we keep those investments that we've made nice and clean and repaired anytime they break. And so we need to also put the money aside, you know, before we need to do that, and put the money aside to make sure that we can make the repairs that are needed when that happens. So again, and also I couldn't agree more with what Tracy said in terms of, the way that the school looks is how the kids feel about the school. And we know as a fact that students meet the expectations you set for them. So if you're setting things really low, they're going to meet those low expectations. If we set our expectations high and have nice schools, they're going to meet those expectations.
Ms. Thiel?
Well, I actually voted no at a board meeting on the bond, and the reason I did was I did polling of this community. I went all over this community. I imposed in people while they were out to eat, in church, in the shopping centers, in the shopping center parking lot, and I haven't had an overwhelming response of no. So I felt I needed to vote no to represent my constituents. Now, I'm going to share some of the reasons why they told me. I know that people are quite amused when I say the price of bacon and the price of gas, but if you go to the grocery store, you fill your gas tank, you know that's a fact. Okay, moving past that, I think that the community told me they didn't trust us yet. And we have to remember, we're coming off of a bad time. We have a new superintendent that's amazing and doing great things. She has brought our school district community back together. She has reached out and touched the movers and shakers of this community, but now we got to touch the parents and the community. I was hoping to wait one more time to put that bond out, that we could do a little more legwork to get them to buy in. Oversight is another issue they're concerned about. So if the bond does pass, then I think that that's something we need to focus on to prove to our community that it is forthright and transparent. Then I want to talk a minute about other states and how they fund their schools. And I think this room is full of some very intelligent people, and I think we need to get ourselves to Sacramento and lobby to have our funding source changed. It happens in other states. I know how funding for facilities has happened in several other. It does not come out of general funds or bonds. We can do that as a community, and we can do it at the state. Thank you.
Okay. Next question. Outside of the standard school curriculum, what support services for students would you prioritize as a member of the school board? Mr. Torina, we'll start with you.
Could you repeat the question?
Yes. Outside of the standard school curriculum, what support services for students would you prioritize as a member of the school board?
I think initially, we have some of those supports, specifically as a former counselor, the work that we're doing in socio-emotional learning for our students. When we look at what's happened in the last four years in regards to how students have had to do school, the way that we did remote learning, there's been a gap in their learning process. Most surveys, most stats, and most research shows that. So how do we get them back? Just in the academic piece, there's that. And secondly, I don't know about many of you, but I could not have done what some of our students were mandated to do, to sit at a computer for hours in the day. And I'm just talking about as a high school student. We have young ones who, I don't know what their learning was, because I don't have young ones anymore, but I know that that wasn't enough to keep them at grade level. It wasn't enough to keep them engaged in a certain way. So now that we're back in school full-time, are they fully participating? Are they fully learning at their capacity? And if you've ever been a student, like I was, where you were not strong in academics, where you were ashamed to be wrong, where sometimes you weren't even called on because, well, he's not going to know the answer. There's something that does to your self-esteem. There's something that does to your identity, which means I'm not worthy. And so we need to get the things that our young people are experiencing, not just academically, intellectually, but also emotionally, because there's a part of that, if they don't have a foundation of being felt that they are valued and that they can learn, then more likely than not, they won't learn. So I would first talk about that piece of SEL that we already providing in the schools. Thank you.
I do agree with what Mr. Torina has mentioned. As someone who finished the last year, the last semester of college virtual in college, it was difficult for me, and I cannot only imagine how it was for students in elementary schools and high schools, right, middle schools. I do think that socio-emotional learning is something that I will focus. All the students go through things, experience things in a different way, and I think we need to provide their resources and be ready when they need them. And by having, creating an environment where they feel safe to seek those services, it's fundamental, as well as providing the resources to their families. Yeah.
Absolutely. Well, I agree with what these two are saying. We definitely need to get more mental health resources into our schools. COVID really messed up our kids in terms of their social abilities and things like that. And it's something that I think, even if our schools really focus hard on it, it's going to take five or 10 years to be able to finally fix the effects, the negative effects of that. I also think, though, Santa Barbara County is one of the most nonprofit-dense places in all of California, and that we need to do more to leverage that here in our schools. I really wish the city council would do something like this, but I think the next natural place to do this is in our schools, where the community meets for most of the year, for most of the day, is to have more nonprofits that we partner with, more nonprofits in our community. We have a lot of great ones. We have the LVCHO, we have C4, we have plenty of, I could go on and on. We have plenty of great ones. Because I ultimately think, first and foremost, it should be parents dealing with these issues with their kids and having these conversations with their kids about drugs, violence, homelessness, all of these things. I think we need to give parents the tools to talk to their kids and encourage them to talk to their kids about these things, as we know that there's no age too early. I'm sure there are people in here also, though, that remember the DARE program, and that didn't work. When the school dictates instead of facilitates, it doesn't work. And so we really need to partner up with more nonprofits. So if a parent comes to us and says, hey, you know what, maybe I grew up in a violent home, I don't know how to talk to my kids about violence, I don't know how to talk to my kids about drugs, that's where we can step in and say, hey, well, here's this great resource, here's a counselor, here's the space to talk to your kid. I would love to see, this is a pipe dream of mine, but I would love to see a classroom on every campus dedicated to nonprofits, where parents can show up and get resources and meet nonprofits face-to-face and have them be able to table at our schools and talk directly to parents and children.
Well, I agree with almost everything that's been said up here, or actually everything that's been said. I think, I'm probably the oldest one up here, and social-emotional learning was taught when I went to school. I mean, I think that it was incorporated in everything. I do think that we have crisis with our students now, and I do think that they need more assistance. We are so blessed in our community and county with resources, and we have some of the most amazing school staff and teachers and administration in the state. I think our kids have a wealth of resources. Our administration brings recommendations to the board, and the board discusses it and votes on those. I think that we have, other than the social emotion, I think we have outside of the school area. Future for Lompoc Youth is an amazing resource in the community, the Youth Teen Center, Youth Leadership Lompoc Valley. I could go on and on. There are so many great resources. And as far as counseling and medical resources, drug and alcohol resources, there's a plethora out there, and we need to make them available. Our school district's always been very good at that, not just guiding students, but helping parents. I think that this district's blessed that way.
Ms. Phillips?
So I also agree with pretty much everything that was said up here, but I would want to add that this has been an issue, or the change in the social environment has been an issue longer than just COVID. I think with the advent of cell phones and social media, we've seen a huge change or a shift. The peer pressure and the bullying that used to be out in front for teachers to notice is no longer that way. It's behind a screen, where people can be anonymous and kind of do this without the realization of those around them. So they've shown over and over that there's an increase in depression and anxiety directly related to social media, and the suicide rate has been on the rise. So with more students experiencing these kinds of stress, we definitely need more support in the schools. Now, I do believe that our district is already doing quite a lot and has programs set in place with the SEL, but I think that there is a place where there needs some improvement, and that's probably in the identification and referral process for the students. I think that teachers are being asked to kind of work outside of their area of comfort in identifying students with needs, and they're not always clear on what to do once they do identify them. And I think there are a lot of resources in the community as well, as I think about this, that there are things out there. So particularly Future for Lompoc, I saw a presentation that was really impressive on what they could do. So that being said, I would like to see kind of a streamlined system of identification and referral for our students, but we do always need to remember that the school's there for education, and these programs shouldn't supplant our education, it should support our education, so.
Moving on to the next question. The lack of adequate staffing has greatly impacted our school district. Currently, there are 63 open positions in the Lompoc Unified School District, three open certified positions, and 60 open classified positions. How will you work to attract and retain teachers and other staff in the Lompoc Unified School District? Ms. Villa?
What we can do to improve retention, to ensure that we are hiring the best of the best, because teachers do have a big influence on students, and I am a testament of that. I can honestly say that without the support of my teachers and counselors, I would not be where I am today, and that just shows how important our teachers are in our lives. And to ensure that we hire the best teachers and that we retain them, we need to increase their salaries, their benefits, as was providing support that they need, and getting the parents to participate more, to be more engaged. A lot of times, parents blame our teachers because whatever is happening in their students' life, but if we're going to hold our teachers accountable, we also need to hold parents accountable as well as students. It's a relationship that we need to strengthen, and I don't think we have done a job, doing a good job at doing that. So if we want, like I said, if we want to retain our teachers and attract teachers, we need to offer better salaries and better benefits and offering the support that they need.
Mr. Link?
Absolutely. Well, I think the hard Well, I think the hardest, easiest solution that I agree with is obviously, or the, yes, that was right, the hardest, the most simple solution that I agree with is, is obviously paying them more and giving them better benefits. For a district like ours, that's kind of cash strapped, I think, you know, we have to figure that out, how we, how we're going to do that. You know, we just passed on, on giving our teachers a raise this last time around, and so, it's definitely going to have to happen very soon. I think additionally, though, going back to Measure M, you know, no teacher is going to come here to get paid less to work in a worse facility than they could somewhere else. And so, if we're not providing either of those things, then we're doing them a disservice. Also, I think, you know, in terms of, of that, though, it is kind of a, kind of a self-fulfilling prophecy, if you will, you know, we also need smaller class sizes for our teachers. We need to make their jobs easier so that they can actually work with all of our students. And so, you know, building more classrooms, again, through Measure M, or finding another way to do that is one way to do that, but we need to find more teachers in general. And then, also, though, just talking about teachers, classified staff, we have ten open bus driver positions, eight open bus driver positions, it's too many. We, we have to cut off routes to certain schools because we don't have the bus drivers to take our kids to school. So, it's not just teachers, it, you know, the service of our schools goes down when we don't have staff at all, you know, in any position. So, you know, whether it's the guys picking up trash, or the, the, the principal, or our superintendent, you know, we really need to provide a better service all the way around. And, and on top of that, you know, provide more unique programs. So going back to the trades and STEM stuff, you're going to hear me go back to that a lot, because I think that when we can start providing unique programs, also, a teacher might say, well, you know what, it's not quite what I was looking for, but it's unique, it's something I couldn't get somewhere else, and, or it's something I couldn't teach somewhere else, and so, I'm going to take a chance on Long Poak. And I will say, you know, obviously, the school quality and teacher quality, though, number one indicator of if someone is going to send their kids to school here, and right now, again, a lot of folks look at Long Poak and see our two and a half stars, or whatever it is, and, and they say, you know what, maybe I'll go to Orchid instead. And so, we need to avoid that.
Ms. Thiel?
Well, I agree with what's been said, and we definitely need to, and we have been kind of creative. We've offered a bus driver sign-on bonus, we've done the same thing with special education program, trying to get staff in there. I think our staff and our district's done really well. I know that our numbers were high, they're getting better. I think we need to be creative like that and continue to look at things like that. During Covid, I think that many people moved on to different professions, bus driving being one, and we've got to lure those people back into wanting to be part of our school community. It takes a special person to drive a, a school bus of children. I drove a bus, a van of children, I, I can guarantee you that. I think that we need to continue to positively promote our, our community, and I think the biggest plus is something that we're looking for at right now in this district, I'm very excited to be part of that, the workforce housing pro, uh, project for our staff. And hopefully, that will come to fruition, and we will be able to attract staff, new staff to our district, and assist staff in our district and teachers that can use help with housing. Housing is one of the biggest issues our staff and teachers face here. Thank you.
Ms. Phillips?
So, the difficulty attracting teachers is not unique to Long Poak, there's a nationwide shortage. As a person who has chosen to come to Long Poak as a teacher, I know some of the things that were issues when I came here, and one of the first things that I noticed was the benefits package, so I would definitely prefer to see that worked on, along with salaries. I, but in addition, I hate to beat a dead horse, but the working environment is huge for a teacher. It is difficult to come in day and day to a classroom that is in such disarray and ill repair that it makes you feel depressed. So, I would definitely go back to that Measure M, we need to make our school sites someplace that will attract when a teacher goes on a tour to see if they want to work here. They are attracted to come here by looking at that school. I, and I, as, as a teacher who has done that, I will tell you that has more of an effect than a salary. I have come or changed districts for a working environment and left a higher salary for it. So, I definitely believe that the working environment is huge, along with what everybody else said.
Mr. Torina?
Well, it's, it's easy to say, right? Let's just raise some salaries and, and the benefits, and we'll get more. Very hard to do it in a district that's strapped for cash, which a lot of our districts are through California, and will be. The, this, the, the, the vision on how schools will be funded over the next three to five years is not as great as we would hope, and there may be changes to that, depending on how the economy goes. The workforce housing possibility is just that, it's still a possibility, but would do great things for attracting and keeping qualified, highly qualified teachers and staff. There's an area where I think we can look at, where, why are we not growing our own? Because some of these people live here now. In fact, the families that are, are staff and are teachers, the majority of them live here. So how can we look at our young people now and attract them to the work of the school district? Now, bus driving is hard. I used to drive a van with kids, and it's not easy, and yet, it is still workable. It is still where somebody can go and, and earn a living wage, maybe, with a partner who also is earning a living wage. Housing is not going to go down in California. Health costs probably will not go down in California. We are getting a housing project of over four hundred homes just over by Home Depot, another one proposed just above the Y. So there's opportunities for us to start growing our own, where they don't have to worry about housing, because their families live here. And if we can get some students on track, give them a very positive and enlightening experience in school, maybe some of them who live here, who have in the past, families have become teachers and stay here. So I think that's all possibility for those areas of staffing.
Thank you. Safety can be defined within the school environment by reducing incidence of physical violence, exposure to substance abuse, or bullying prompted by sexual identity, religious or cultural practices, or physical disabilities as examples. As a school board member, how would you engage staff and parents in order to address this broad spectrum of issues that affect our children? And Mr. Link will begin with you.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I kind of answered this a little bit already, but I think it goes back to putting more resources into the hands of our parents and, and to our teachers. I agree with what Tracy was saying, though, you know, it is not up to teachers to be the secret police for parents and vice versa, for, you know, for a teacher to go and tell a student something that their parent told them in confidence. I think that we ultimately need to make sure that the resources are available, though. And so, we do have them, I mean, they exist. Again, in Long Poak, you wouldn't really know it, because they're all kind of siloed, they're all kind of off in their own corners, doing their own things. Because again, you know, you have to realize nonprofits and these kind of programs are kind of a business, you're all competing for the same public funding and the same grants. And so, we really need a body to come together, and that body is the school board, in my mind, that is going to say, hey, how can you guys work together to provide a better all-around service? And so, again, it really, it just ultimately comes down to, and I know it's a shocking thing to say, but parents need to talk to their kids, and we really need to encourage them to do that and help them facilitate those conversations. I think additionally, you know, too, I'm not against school resource officers, I had Deputy Bob of Cabrillo, if anyone knows Deputy Bob, nice guy. I think we need to make those figures on our schools, though, not antagonistic, but a friendly face, and someone that they know they can go to and talk to and say, hey, you know what, I saw this, or whatever it is, and not have such an antagonistic feel about it. That's how it was, I felt when I was in school, and so, I think, you know, I'm not against resource officers or anything like that either, you know, having physical safety and having, you know, again, that's a huge issue that we face in terms of mass shootings and things like that, and so we need to do more to obviously head those things off, but if, you know, people need to, that physical safety on campus to feel safe, then I, then I'm okay with that as well. We need to do it right.
Ms. Thiel?
I also think this is probably one of the most important things that we need to focus on, is the staphy of our kids on their campuses and to and from school. I think we, our school district does a pretty good job of this. I would like to see us focus on getting more cameras on our school sites. Communication on school sites, I think, is important, to have a variety of different types of communications, walkie-talkies, cell phones, the ca, uh, the regular phones may not be working. I think I would like to see our district organize some parent nights to help parents, because I do think that it's important. I think parents are struggling with some things at home, and they could use information as to what resources they can go to. I, I see the district as being an avenue to provide that. I also would be in favor of, or support resource officers on their campus. When my kids went there, they were there, seemed to be part of the, the crew, I mean, you've frequently seen them with the students, and seemed to know what was going on before most other people on the campus did. I, I do like that we have our school campuses locked down, that's not always been the case in this district, and even though it's just an extra step, I think that's really important, that people understand that it's, it's important to stop at the gate, stop at the office, sign in, it's for the protection of your student, of all the students and the staff. I would like us to continue to look into different resources and communication methods in this district, but I really think, and I've heard this from some of our, our schools, we need to focus on cameras. Some of them have cameras, some of the PTAs have bought cameras, they're just waiting for installation, they've been waiting for over a year now. Thank you.
Ms. Phillips?
So, as a teacher in a classroom, I would have to tell you that I never felt terribly unsafe in this district. There are a lot of things in place, those resource officers and campus supervisors, there are some cameras in place, and there is quite a bit of training and drills that take place throughout the time. But that being said, we can always do more, and I agree, there should be an increase in the number of cameras and making sure those cameras are always working, maybe a little bit improved security in parking lots, as, well as the intercom system. So, I know that in my classroom, the intercom very rarely worked, and that would be like one of the first things I would want to go to, if I felt there was an emergency, I'd want to be able to push that button and know that I could contact somebody fairly quickly. So, I think those intercom systems are really important to get fixed as well. I do know that, again, Measure M does have plans in place with all of those things being upgraded, so I do believe that they are already in the works, if Measure M passes. So, there's also the need to go back to student safety on the bullying. So, again, I feel like the issue of cyber bullying and social media is causing a huge safety issue as far as mental safety. So, again, I would have to go back to looking at ways to identify kids that are perhaps bullying or being aggressive on their devices. So, I would also like to see something done in that, maybe some kind of coursework or training or whatever, for kids to kind of coach other kids in how it is and is not acceptable to be on a device, so.
Mr. Torina?
So I think the technology of safety, we know about that. I think our resource officers are good, especially if you get good ones. Having worked in student services before, really trying to integrate law enforcement into the school, I think the best example is what they, what we've, what they did down at Dos Pueblos, where he's not only their resource officer, he's also their coaching of varsity baseball. So, the idea that, because I know there's two sides, right? Some people think law enforcement on campus makes it safe, and there are others who feel that it makes certain people unsafe, and, and both can be true. My idea is, if we make sure that every student has one trusted adult on campus, where they can go to them and say, hey, look, this is happening, or a group of students, of peers, where they can have conversations about all these things that make them feel unsafe, and then have an avenue, some type of venue or corridor which they can bring those to the attention, not just of a trusted teacher, but then our administration, and then hopefully at the district level, where we can address some of those things. There are many programs that I've participated in, where we train students to be those advocates for other students, because there are students out there who have voices, who do want to be a part of the solution, and we have to give them opportunity, because the safest place, usually in a day, is at school. But when you start to feel unsafe, there's got to be ways that students can actually talk about that, have it addressed, and then go back and make sure that we've addressed, are they feeling safe now that some measures have been put in?
And Ms. Via?
I think when we're talking about safety, we need to, we have, we need to acknowledge that we have the physical safety and the emotional safety, right? When we're talking about the, the physical one, what we can do is collaborate or partner with law enforcement and other agencies, organizations, talk, to conduct a safety assessment and identify areas to ensure that our schools are safe for all students, as well as teachers and personnel. When we're talking about the emotional, psychological safety, I think we have a pandemic of bullying all over the United States, and I don't think our schools are doing a good job at protecting the victims. I think we need to take more severe actions, I, have more, yeah, we need to take more severe actions, and those, the students who are bullying other students need to have, face more severe consequences. Also, another thing that we can do is protect the victims, and often, we, they feel isolated, and they are not provided with the resources that they need, so we also need to do a better job at doing that. I can say that, again, going through the school system, middle school and high school here, a lot of the times, signing a contract, with, having the bully and a stu, the victim sign a contract does not work, and we need to do a better job at protecting the, the victims and providing resources, again, to the students who may be bullying others or harassing others, because often, that is as a result of problems at home, they may be experiencing trauma, so I think it's providing, providing them with the resources is another thing that we can do.
Moving on to the next question. How can the school board help teachers find a balance between state mandated academic curriculum and career pathways? Ms. Thiel?
Well, we're very blessed that we have great administration that does a great job at pulling those resources together for us and presenting them. I think it's up to the board to ask the questions and then vote to support the recommendations that are coming forward if we see fit. I think that, I'm sorry, I just lost my train, what was your question again? I'm sorry.
How can the school board help teachers find a balance between state mandated academic curriculum and career pathways?
Okay, I'm sorry. I also think that we need to, I apologize for the interruption, I also think we need to continue to support our teachers in the classrooms to assist in whatever their needs are, too, and each teacher in classroom is going to be different, to facilitate getting our students off career and, and college-ready. As far as balance, I'm going to add something else on that. I think it's really important for me, for our staff and our teachers and our administration to have a work and life equal balance, and, and I think that is really important, because they bring that into their classroom with them.
Ms. Phillips?
So, first, the curriculum is, or the standards that are set by the state are set by the state, so we are supposed to be teaching to those, though, how, how we teach them is our choice. So, kind of the old style of reading, writing, arithmetic has kind of given way in the last few years, or fifty years, to more need for critical thinking and technology-based understanding. So I think that the curriculum that we present in the classroom needs to reflect that change, so away from that old style of reading, writing, arithmetic. The jobs that are available are mostly tech-based, especially in our community now, we have a lot of tech-based jobs, our opportunities are going to open up with the base, so we need to prepare our kids. And the biggest thing is to have exposure, they have to be able to see how this stuff is used, which means we have to have the stuff to show them how it's used, so we can't be living in a nineteen-fifties setting and expect our kids to be functioning in a twenty-twenty-four environment. So, that would be a big thing. That being said, I also believe that we need to make sure that we are expanding job shadowing and- and, um, kind of internships and partnerships with businesses so that we can reach a broad spectrum of students and give them opportunities in places that they may not have even known they were interested in. So, um, the curriculum alone can't guarantee, though, success. I think that in conjunction with all those things, we need to remember that kind of the partnership with a teacher, that kind of connection with a teacher or the school system, uh, has a huge effect on how they learn as well. So, I like, I love the district's motto, actually, so that trusting relationships, high expectations equals every student achieves. Um, I think that's exactly what we need.
Mr. Torina?
So, um, I've had a great conversation about curriculum and, and knowledge, a knowledge base, right? So, knowledge isn't what it used to be. As Ms. Phillips talked about, it used to be where I, as a teacher, knew everything about a content subject and I would disseminate that information to you and you would respond to me by showing that you know it through tests and assessments and all that. Students now have more knowledge in their hand than any teacher can give them at any time during a school year. So, what do we call knowledge now? The idea that we have a state mandated curriculum, we will teach to that. That is what our job is. But how to use curriculum, how to use knowledge, how to take a curric- a, a career pathway and back map that if you want this career in this industry, then these are the things you need to know. Do you really need to know a certain level of English if you're just going to be a welder? Well, maybe, if you're going to have your own business and write contracts and contract out or subcontract. Do you really need to know a level of math if you're just going to be a roofer? Yeah, because roofs are square area. You have certain number of, of piles of roofing material that you have to use. So, if we can start connecting pathways back to curriculum, then I think that might be an easier sell for our students because our students know. Oh, I, uh, here's AI. Please write me a 10th grade level essay on Romeo and Juliet and the causes of their mutual deaths. My wife sees that on a regular basis. She has to check it, make sure all the AI components are eliminated. But there's a difference now between what curriculum used to be and knowledge base versus linking that to a pathway. And we have to make some amends to make sure that the students know why we're teaching a curriculum to get to a certain pathway.
Ms. Villa?
Uh, for this, I believe that we need to provide resources and training to our teachers. We need to make sure that teachers are, are being flexible because every student learns in a different way and when we are teaching, we have to be mindful of that. Some of our students have learning disabilities, some of them don't speak, the English is their second language. So, we need to be mindful of that and, um, and ensuring that we are teaching, uh, and supporting our students in the, the, in the best, the best way that, that helps them. And when we're talking about careers, we need to move forward. So, maybe a teacher has a, uh, a specific, a unique style of teaching, but we need to move forward and if that was the way they were teaching, they have been teachers for 30 years or so, they need to adapt to the new generations as well. Now, we have a lot of technology, so ensuring that they are meeting the needs of this new generation of students, um, and ensuring that we are providing scholarship, uh, internships, the students have access to internships or, um, exposure to other jobs. We have a lot of local jobs here and, and we want to, something that always makes me, that makes me sad is when I hear students say that they want to leave Lompoc because there's nothing to do here, because we don't have any job opportunities. And as many of you who grew up here, um, and as, just as me, I, that's what, that's what I wanted to do when I graduated from high school, leave Lompoc because there is nothing to do. We need to change that mentality. We need, we need to teach students and, uh, provide them with the resources that they need to know that they can be successful here too.
Mr. Link?
Um, yeah, I fundamentally agree with what Brenda just said, but I also want to add on, these, we do have jobs coming into our community finally and we're missing the boat on them. So, even the jobs we are getting in here, we're not getting our kids those jobs and we're not getting Lompokians those jobs. Uh, a lot of those jobs too are, are trades jobs. They're looking for welders on base, they're looking for electricians, they're looking for machinists, uh, to fix the rockets when they come back down. I would like to put students, uh, I would like to open as many doors as possible, I should say, for students before they finish. I don't want a kid when he's 15 to be like, yeah, I think I want to be a welder and you get him to sa- a senior year and they're like, yeah, I don't want to be a welder, so I need to quickly reestablish my whole academic career here. I would really like to walk kids, give them, expose them to as many different trades and jobs as possible, get them internships, apprenticeships, get them partnered with, uh, the many launch companies we have on base. There's, there's SpaceX, but there are six other ones out there. They're all trying to catch up to where SpaceX is at. Um, and we need to make sure that they're getting exposed to that, seeing if that's something they want to do. Additionally, if they do want to do that, it's something that we can work with Allen Hancock, we can work with our own teachers to get our kids state certified in this stuff so they can get a welding certificate through the state of California. Additionally, because of Allen Hancock, some of these classes are dual enrollment classes as well. So, we can walk a kid through both and, because I see STEM and, and trades as two sides in the same coin. Engineers are going to need welders, welders are always going to be working with engineers. Um, and we can get them to the end of that path and say, okay, you've opened all these doors, you have these three certificates and whatever, electrician, electrician work, welding, machining, what do you want to do? And you've also earned a year's worth of your credits for your engineering degree. What do you want to do? Do you want to go to Allen Hancock and finish your engineering degree, go to Cal Poly? Or do you want to go and work on base and get a job that hopefully we can hook you up with beforehand? And so, I really think it's about opening as many doors as possible and then getting kids to the end and saying, okay, you've done all this, what do you want to do now?
Thank you. Next question. Our school district is very diverse. How would you support the diversity and inclusion of all students and families? Ms. Phillips, we'll start with you.
So, first, we have to acknowledge that there is diversity. So, there is a huge difference, um, in races that we have, with genders, religious practices, learning abilities, physical abilities and so on. So, there is a huge diversity. Um, and these things do have a real effect on the educational experience. Our schools are not here to tell kids who they should be. We are here to nurture, um, them in their determination of their own identity. So, um, I think that's really important. We shouldn't be trying to get kids to fit into any mold. We should recognize them as individuals and allow them a safe place to nurture who they are. So, um, studies have shown that kids with a greater sense of personal identity will actually be more successful in both academic and personal relationships. So, I think it's really important to do that. In order to do that, we have to kind of acknowledge and embrace differences and actually celebrate them because they are, um, what makes us strong is the difference. So, I, I saw a board presentation, um, from a group at, at LHS, I think it was the Brave Unified Champs. I, um, and I actually was really impressed with how this, um, particular group was able to integrate, uh, or provide a way to bring kids together. So, they brought, um, kids with disability and with just standard education kids and were able to get them, um, into programs where they were, uh, doing athletics and arts programs together. And I saw the benefit for both the disa- disabled children and the regular ed children and how much joy it brought all of them. So, it was very impressive. I, um, I think we need more of that, uh, across a broader spectrum. So, I'd like to see, um, that. And then along with the physical ADA accessibilities, um, we need to work on that, uh, with ADA classrooms and buildings.
Mr. Torina?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
Certainly. Our school district is very diverse. How would you support the diversity and inclusion of all students and families?
I think to Ms. Phillips' point is, um, the recognition that we're diverse. I think there have been certain entities and, and groups where that recognition is not only, um, not happening, but to some degree being denied. And my experience with young people is as soon as they are seen in the sense of their self, as soon as they are acknowledged as if they matter and count and that we value them, there's a part where support, where I think we, we should be doing all the time. And it, it irks me a little bit that we have groups who don't want to do that. And I was just dealing with a former, former, uh, young lady that I coached, um, in basketball and she was dealing with this, this issue of racism. And, and not just that she was different, but she was, she was dehumanized in a way where how can, how can she get past that? And this is somebody who trusted me because I've coached her. And I'm trying to figure out, where's the avenue in our community and in our schools where we can allow people, young people especially, as they are finding out? Because they want to be something when they're seven, different when they're fi- when they're 15, different when they're 20. But if we say that you can't do that or you can't be that way or you don't have value because you're that way, then I don't think that's what we're supposed to do as a district, as a school and as a community.
Ms. Villa?
We need to foster understanding and respect. That is something that we need to do. And by, uh, acknowledging that DEI exists and that it is important in our schools, we are doing that. We need to create a safe space for ours, for all students where they feel welcome and, um, also for the parents. I, I believe we have a disconnect with a lot of the community members here in Lompoc, um, and, and it's unfortunate. And by acknowledging that DEI and embracing the cultures and backgrounds from all students is really important. That really impacts also, uh, how our students, um, how students feel in our schools. So, yes, uh, DEI is important and we need to embrace the differences and the different backgrounds that we have, especially, especially in a state as like diverse, like, uh, California.
Yes.
Link, sorry.
Wait, it's okay, I'm two steps ahead of ya. Um, no, we, we need to do more to engage, uh, these groups. So, 70% of our district is Latino. Uh, that's also the group that we struggle to retain the most ironically. And so, we need to do more to engage that community. They clearly, uh, are not feeling represented, uh, students aren't feeling represented. And so, what we do for that is it needs to be a concrete effort. It's not just, oh, we're just saying it, oh, well, sometimes we supply things in Spanish. Um, it needs to be a very motivated effort and a very pointed effort, uh, to make sure that they're contacted and included and know what's going on. Because oftentimes too, the, these are the kids who struggle the most and their parents don't know how to contact the school or can't communicate with the school. And so, they're saying, oh, how you doing at school? And they're like, I'm doing great. And they're like, great, I have no way to verify that? I believe you. Um, and so, we really need to do more to ensure that those parents are engaged and that's going to be a challenge. I mean, it's going to be many things that, uh, you couldn't fit into a two-minute answer. Uh, you know, there, we need to have robust programs. That's why I'm very excited frankly, that we have someone like Brenda who's running, uh, to be that voice and be, uh, that face, uh, for that community, to access that community because it is not something that we've had and, uh, it needs, it needs to happen. And so, um, additionally, I think that goes back to some of my previous points of, of supplying more resources to parents, uh, through nonprofits or, or other programs or businesses in the community that want to partner with the school to, uh, act as diversion for these things or act as outreach for these things. I think there are plenty of partners who would love to spread the message of a inclusive school board to everybody, um, but we just have not done it yet.
And Ms. Steele?
I also think diversity and inclusion is, um, needs to be a top priority. I think going back, we were taught that as children, learning to play in the sandbox together. We accept everybody, no matter who they are and we play nice. I think that we need to continue that through our whole life and I hope that we all do. Uh, I think we need to provide programs that our students need, whatever that might be, that, those recommendations come back to us. I also think we need to respect the opinion of everybody, whether they agree with us or not. I think we need to be the example for our students because they watch us. And if they see us engaging with other cultures, they will. If they see us respectful of one another, they will be respectful. I think we need to be inclusive with our parents and our community. We are celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month with the district. I would like to see the entire city of Lompoc celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month with us. I think that's inclusivity. I would like us to do more of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our next question. What is your understanding of the importance of Title IX? What are your priorities for ensuring the law is enforced? Mr. Mr. Torina?
In regards to Title IX, as far as non-discriminatory practices in our educational process, whether it's academic and/or, um, extracurricular, my understanding of that is whatever we offer, one, we offer the other. Whatever we offer boys, we offer girls. The monitoring of that, the, um, making sure that that happens, that's the piece that makes it a little bit more difficult and, because it's nuanced, right? So, um, let's say the boys varsity team always gets the field or always gets the gym at a certain time, but that is never assessed, never relooked at on a yearly basis, that potentially could be a Title IX issue. Let's say the, the access to, uh, a certain sport, which I know we just started flag football. There's ideas regarding Title IX that I'm not as versed in, but what I feel is what we offer one, we offer the other. And if we can and if we don't, then why not? And then look at ways that we can get those who are feeling discriminated against or marginalized engaged in a way where they will feel not marginalized and, and actually participatory in whatever they feel they're being excluded from. So, so part of that work is not easy because it's, it's nuanced in a way where I think people don't even know that there may be a Title IX violation because this is what we've always done. And I think tradition and past practice sometimes puts us in a place where we should be, um, looking at those violations.
Ms. Villa?
We need to ensure that all students feel that we're providing equal opportunities to both genders, right? Um, and to ensure that we need to be in compliance, all the schools need to be in compliance, uh, with the regulations. And if teach, uh, and also providing training to teachers. That's another way that we can, uh, we can ensure that we're in compliance and, uh, just continue ensuring the, the, the both boys and girls, uh, feel, um, have access to the same opportunities.
Mr. Link?
Um, I think that Mitch summed it up really, really well. I think what's offered, one is offered to all. I think that, you know, it, it's an important role of the board, uh, to be the face of the community, obviously, and, and spread this message far and wide. But also, you know, we're often the, the folks who have to deal with the repercussions or, uh, the, the, you know, getting people in trouble who have broken that. Uh, and so, I think, um, we need to just do, do more to, to be diligent and to, uh, it kind of goes back to the previous question too, do engage and make sure that all folks are engaged. So, if they feel like their voice isn't being heard, uh, that that's not something that comes up in an explosive way or in, in some combative way. We really need to make sure that we're contacting folks on a yearly basis, uh, and making sure that we reevaluate our programs, um, to be inclusive as possible. So, um, because I think even when it's not on purpose, uh, you can sometimes exclude someone in the same sense that Mitch brought up, you know? Just because it's been that way doesn't mean it has to stay that way. And if it has been that way a long time, it might mean that you're squeezing someone out who otherwise wants more from whatever program that is or wants the same thing that, uh, the boys are getting or the girls are getting, so.
Ms. Steele?
Well, I am happy to say we do offer programs to any student that wants to participate in them. Uh, there is no discrimination. The district does have a pro- uh, a process or policy in place and it goes through the administration. And if there is a violation or a concern, it would come before the board. I'm going to tell you, I can't recall that ever happening. I think that we're really good in this district about including all children or all students in all activities, programs during school and after school. Uh, I do think Mitch brought up a, uh, interesting thought I hadn't considered about maybe the girls want the prime time, practice time. So, we might want to look into that. Thanks.
Ms. Phillips?
Um, I, I absolutely agree with everything that they've said so far, so I'm not going to repeat it, but, um, I think there is another piece. So, the Title IX came about in the seventies, um, and there is a little bit more to it than just equality. Um, there is also that schools should be, or academic- Um, there is also that schools should be, or academic institutions should be free of gender harassment or discrimination. And certainly Title IX has been positive throughout the years. But I think that in more recent years, there's been an issue that has come up that was unforeseen in the seventies. And that was the issue of gender identity. So, um, I think that, um, that has been often brought up as of late. I, I'm in conjunction with Title IX on just exactly where the line is. I, on, um, who participates in the girl's sports or the boy's sports. Um, and I think that, um, that would be a difficult issue to, to, to kind of decide on. However, the state has very clear rules. I, um, and I think that we would be left kind of with following the state's kind of regulations in that, um, for that particular issue. I, that's pretty much all I got.
Thank you. The next question is, how would you ensure that all students have access to high-level STEM courses? And Ms. Villa will begin with you.
We need to colla- for that, we need to collaborate with local businesses, universities, and, uh, just provide, ensure the students have access to hands-on, um, careers, right? Uh, and take them on tours to universities or whether, what, uh, whatever that is. We also need to, um, promote, uh, STEM clubs and, um, other projects as well as ensuring that students, minority students also have access to these programs because often they, they are not exposed to STEM fields. Uh, and by, by doing all of this, we can ensure that all the students have access to, uh, to this, uh, to the STEM, uh, the STEM field.
Thank you, Mister Link?
Oh yeah, you're talking my language. Um, yes, we need to do more. And I think, again, I'm going to put trades in there with STEM. I think they're two sides of the same coin. We can teach them side by side, uh, because these are hands-on careers that we're talking about. And these are careers that I really think our school board should be focusing on the careers that we're developing here in town. I have a slogan, it is community-focused education. And we really need to focus on the education that the community needs or is asking for. And so we need to build up our workforce, uh, in order to, in, in order to take advantage of the jobs that are developing on base. And so we need to be focusing on hands-on education. They do this really well in Santa Maria. They have the Mark Robinson Career Tactical Education Center. It is a, it is, I, I want it in all of our schools. This is a separate school in Santa Maria where folks go, uh, kids go during the day and they take electives in welding, in culinary arts, large diesel engine repair, agricultural classes, like a lot of 4H-type stuff. They have focused it a lot on the ag industry. I would love to see the same thing in our schools, focused on robotics, AI, uh, teaching kids, um, about welding, machining. Uh, and, and I would, for this, I would love to partner with those, uh, on-base companies that are doing this. I know SpaceX has maybe been a little unwilling. I think that, you know, uh, we don't take no for an answer though, when it comes to something like this. And it really is going to take the whole board, uh, bugging these folks, bugging folks in our community to say, we need hands-on training, we need hands-on exposure. And additionally, I'd love to give some of these companies a little free help. I'd love to say, hey, take some of our kids, get an internship, get an apprenticeship, teach them how to do it. Um, so that when they graduate, again, we can have opened all these doors with, through STEM and trades, get them to the end and say, you have all these certificates, but you also have this great opportunity to go to college and learn about engineering or learn about science and do STEM. Which do you want to do? I think that ultimately it is best left up to an eighteen-year-old to make that decision than some fifteen-year-old at the beginning of high school, uh, to put themselves on a pathway and, and walk them through that, um, and then find out, you know what, I want to be a chef, actually. Um, so I think, uh, we need more exposure.
Thank you, Ms. Thiel?
Well, I'm happy to say we do have a lot of STEM activity going on in our district. We have a couple STEM schools that focus directly on that. We do have a robotics program, I believe Maple does it, I don't know if we have another school that does it. So there are exciting things out there. We can always use more and I think we should add more. And I'm just going to tag on to the trades, um, thing. I think that's really crucial. And I've talked with our superintendent about it and, and she's, uh, shared an interest. We have strong trade unions in our, in our county here. And I've talked to some of the, the members and they're willing to come into our schools. So it would be great to have the electricians come into our schools and work and, and maybe do that apprenticeship program. I do know the plumbers and pipe bidders are open to it, but it's a scheduling conflict. So I think if we as a district and the unions can work together, that's something that we could make happen for our kids. Again, I, I think, and I don't know if this goes in with STEM, but our kids are doing e-gaming. And I'm going to throw that in there too, because that's a new thing for me. I don't know if that's a thing coming out, but I'm fascinated with it, so our kids are doing that too. Thank you.
Thank you, and Ms. Phillips?
So, um, I was a STEM teacher. I taught, uh, science and math throughout my entire career at pretty high levels, at the AP level. So, um, I have a little bit of understanding on what, um, is required to be successful at high levels. And I would tell you that critical thinking skills are going to be essential. And I would like to see them brought in much earlier, particularly in the areas of science and math than they are. There's no real solid science education until you start to get to middle school. So I, something a little bit more problem-solving based and conceptual-based rather than just, uh, this is what it is and repeat it back to me kind of based. Uh, so I would like to see that change for sure, that everything is more, again, focused towards getting kids, um, with those critical thinking skills. Uh, the other thing, um, we need more modern equipment and supplies uh, so that kids can actually see what the modern STEM looks like. So, um, I was doing experience, experiments with tape measures and, uh, stopwatches. Uh, when we have modern kind of motion detectors and stuff that are available, but we just didn't have them here. So, uh, that would certainly, um, be beneficial to have more modern equipment and more modern labs so the kids are much more aware of exactly where they, um, are going to need to be performing or perform, the equipment they're going to be performing with. Um, I also agree that, um, we definitely need to get more hands-on experience in some of the trades. Uh, because, um, knowing, uh, theories alone is not going to get you very far. Like I can tell you how a combustion engine works, I know exactly. If you asked me to fix it, I could not. So I, um, I would definitely say that, um, more hands-on experience would be beneficial.
Thank you, Mister Torina?
So my experience in Santa Barbara, where, uh, again, I, I hate to keep referring to my past, but, um, from what started as a very small robotics program, uh, it has now become this full-on engineering program. And so there's, there's parts that everyone has talked about where, um, it would be great if we could just have resources, talk to, uh, on-base launch companies and get them going. But really also have to have the teachers and the people who are also willing to engage with that. So I, I like the idea of something like space science. I mean, we're one of only, what, two places? That launch things into space successfully, regularly, almost weekly, it's almost daily. So that's a different thing. And I'm still amazed by that. And, you know, I, and I was around with the Apollo series. We put things into space and kids watch it and they're amazed. And they should know how to do it. They should know why we do it. So space science, uh, curriculum, what, what space is, atmosphere, weightlessness, what, um, the technology is to be able to put a person in space and not have them die. The engineering that goes, everything from the actual rocket that goes up and then all of the crazy mathematics that I have no clue on of how to get things back down safely and, and make them reusable. I mean, that STEM action in a space science curriculum? Yeah, let's do that.
Moving into our final question. How would you ensure that all students have access to a diverse and historically accurate curriculum? Mister Link?
Um, well, I think, um, I'm very against banning books and, and ideas that we disagree with. I think, uh, you know, I, I always hear folks be like, well, you know, they have these books and, and, you know, I, I'm like, my body and me is, is not bannable. Um, I feel like if, if there's a parent who has some sort of issue with the curriculum that we're teaching, come show me the book that you're having a problem with and, and we can talk about it. Um, I want concrete examples of those things, uh, when we talk about banning books and things like that. And, and again, I'm not, I'm not for it. Um, and so we really need to be focusing on, on history. I mean, teaching facts is facts. Um, history, uh, does not change, but it definitely, uh, changes its color depending on how you tell it. Uh, and so I think we need to, that it's a huge emphasis that we should focus on. I think the state has a lot of good guidelines for that. And then, you know, uh, to Tracy's earlier point, it's, you know, they set the curriculum and it's about how we implement it though. And so that's still important. The tone in which we talk about these things is, is very important in terms of how we teach it and how kids are going to process it. And so, um, again, ultimately though, um, not for anything like banning books or something like that. We need to let our kids get exposure to themselves and leave those choices up to parents. If a parent doesn't want their kid reading a book, then that's up to them. But that may not be up, they can't make that choice for every kid. So, um, that's where I stand on that.
Ms. Thiel?
Well, I do think that the curriculum is important. Our district has a great process and good people in place that review that curriculum. There is input from staff and teachers, there is input from the community and then the decisions made. And then the district, uh, implements a process for how that's going to be rolled out into the schools. And as Tracy had said, each teacher does their own classroom and will implement that how they want. I feel great confidence and, and that's not something I really am concerned about is the curriculum. I have had people come to me and tell me that the curriculum's not available, parents, to which I will ask them to go to their principal, go to their school and ask for that. And as far as banning books, if we're talking about banning books, I am absolutely against that. And I don't know if you know this, but I used to own the bookstore in town, read more books. And I would order any book you asked for. And I have ordered some of the most bizarre and sold, some of the most bizarre books you could imagine. So I am absolutely opposed to banning any book. However, for children, I think they need to be age-appropriate and I think it all, always should come down to what the parents feel is appropriate. Thank you.
Ms. Phillips?
So, um, the district does have a review committee in place for reviewing curriculum. Um, and I think it's actually very good. So, um, I agree with Jerry on that, that, um, the, that's in place to actually review it and the school board does approve it, uh, or have an opportunity to say yes or no on whether or not they approve it. So I'll kind of leave that piece, but I, I do want to address the accessible to all. So, um, I think we do need to make sure that our curriculum reflects our students. So sometimes we're, uh, you know, looking at a curriculum that reflects somebody from nineteen-twenty and we're teaching it to a group of kids who have no connection to that whatsoever. So I would like to see our curriculum have resources kind of, uh, more reflecting our students uh, so that they feel a part of, um, part of the actual educational process or have a connection to it or a link to it and they feel seen and heard in their own education. So I, that's what I would like to see.
Mister Torina?
I believe the state is mandating an ethnic studies requirement for high school. Twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six, I'm not sure when that's supposed to start. So when we look at curriculum in regards to that specific, uh, course and mandate by the state, I think it's important that we actually really take a look. Like, as we start at the meeting, we're on Chumash land, we're on native land. And if we can't include them in our history, then we're missing a whole part of who we are as people living on this land. If we really discount what was happening, uh, during slavery and, and, and believe what some people say, that it wasn't all that bad and was a work jobs program, then, then we need to look at the original documents in regards to what was going on in our country during that time. And then with, uh, our Latino community and, and, you know, the, the cycle of nations that have happened on this land alone, this was once a part of Mexico. And then the in, immigration of a lot of our Asian-Americans who came and did labor to create transportation and, uh, build California up. And then not allowing them to buy property or to, 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 to participate legally. All those are things that we need to remember, to discuss and to allow our kids to know because some of them are identifying that way. And when they don't see themselves, then again, they will not look at where they can fit in our, in our culture, in our society, in our community.
And finally, Ms. Villa?
I do want to say that I am against banning books. Um, we cannot erase history. What we can do is learn from it and not make the same mistakes. Um, and, uh, we need to allow our students to make the decision and, uh, whatever they, whatever it is that they want to learn, right? And by banning books, we're not allowing that. Um, so we need to ensure that they have access to all the materials so they can inform themselves. As, uh, Mr. Torina mentioned, uh, ethnic studies, when we're talking about DEI, ethnic studies is also part of that. So we need to ensure the students have access to, uh, uh, the history and, uh, part of it that sometimes they, uh, they relate to it, right? So when, like I said, when we're, uh, talking about DEI, it, it's important to, uh, to acknowledge that ethnic studies is fundamental in our schools.
Thank you for that. Now we will have closing statements. You will have thirty seconds to give a closing statement. And Ms. Thiel, we will begin with you.
Well, in closing, I would like to thank the AAUW, the Legal Women Voters, Future for Lompoc Youth, my fellow candidates up here, and all of y'all for coming and listening to us. I just want to say, my campaign is about getting back to the basics. It's important that our kids can read and do math and learn history, science, all of the basics. And I think that it's crucial that they learn these in order to be successful in STEM programs and moving up to the other levels. Our district has seen a small increase. We focused on this and we've seen a small increase this year. I would like to remain on the board to continue to be part of that increase. I also would like to remain on the board to be part of the Workforce Housing Project. Thank you.
Ms. Phillips?
So I also would like to thank everybody for coming tonight. Um, I appreciate the opportunity, uh, to be heard. So, um, I would like to ensure that all our students have everything that they need, the learning environments that they need to be successful, productive citizens. And that our staff feels like they have the support to help them achieve that goal. Um, I, 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 a little bit different in respect there. Um, I see that, um, maybe back to the basics is not my particular cup of tea on that. I would like to see us moving forward in a more critical-thinking-based curriculum.
Mister Torina?
Same sentiments, thank you all for being here, thank you for putting on the forum. And I'd like to remind us that public education was created in the Industrial Revolution, the Industrial Age. And a lot of the same things that would happen then in regards to, um, assembly lines still exist. There, there are qwerty things, and if you have any issues regarding the qwerty, uh, I can tell you about it after this. But we are now in a knowledge age. Actually, we're more of an attention age. So I'd like to be a part of the board, and I will be, to make sure that we are more innovative in that progression. Thank you.
Ms. Villa?
As I mentioned earlier, um, I, I am running for the school board, well, as Mister Torina, I am technically official, unofficial board member now. But, um, I want to ensure that, uh, that all the students, that all, that all teachers, all students, all teachers and parents as well, all their community members have a voice. Um, I want to ensure that our students want to stay in Lompoc. We have, Lompoc is such a great city, um, and I think we just need to provide the resources to our students, uh, so they can get a jobs, good-paying jobs here in Lompoc and just providing them with our, um, the skills that they need.
Mister Link?
Well, I'm glad it was addressed at the top, uh, because I, you may not know it because she's not here, but I do have an opponent. Uh, I, I just think it's a little ironic and very disappointing that someone who wants to throw their face on signs and clutter up our town will not come here and face the public and answer questions. And so if you're looking for a school board member who's going to be held accountable, uh, who wants to answer your questions, wants to meet with you, uh, please come find me. Check out my website, linkforlusd.com. And, uh, I hope you'll support me. Thank you to the A U W and all of you guys for coming out. Um, it's really important to answer these questions.
Now we will move on to some voting steps. So voting step number one is register. You can register online by Monday, October 21st by visiting vote411.org or at registratovote.ca.gov. Next, vote. All registered voters will receive a ballot in the mail. Ballots will be mailed on October 7th, 2024. Voters can sign up for Track My Ballot at http:wheremyballot.sos.ca.gov. Two voting options, either vote at home or vote in person. Here's how to vote at home. You will complete your ballot, sign and date the envelope that is already stamped. You will return your ballot by mail early or before November 5th at any US post office or a drop box at a Santa Barbara County election secure box before November 5th. These are at City Hall at 100 Civic Center, Lompoc Public Library, 501 East North Avenue, Santa Barbara County Department of Social Services at 1100 West Laurel Avenue, Vandenberg Village Library at 3755 Constellation Road, or you could drop it off at any polling place. Place. You can vote in person. Election Day is Tuesday, November 5th from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Your polling place is listed on your ballot. Next up, please join us next week for the Nonpartisan Dual Language Candidate Forum for City Council and mayoral candidates. This will be held on October 3rd. Please register at lompocvandenberg-ca.aaw.net. Most of all, thank you for attending tonight's forum and remember our vote, our voice is our vote. Let's vote. Thank you to the Fund for Santa Barbara, collaborators, the League for Women Voters, Northern Santa Barbara County, Future for Lompoc Youth, City of Lompoc, Venue, TapTV, KPEG Radio, Bill Smith and Alex Emiot, co-moderators, myself and Carmen Martinez. Candidates, Jerry Thiel, Tracy Phillips, Mitch Torina, Brenda Villa, Carson Link. Interpreters, Jose Farias and Viviana Marzano. Timekeepers, Wynne Clevenger and Alice Downe. The forum volunteer team, the forum planning team, and the forum technical team. Thank you for attending tonight's forum. Let's vote. [applause]